For the record, it's 5:15 PM on Thursday, July 14th, 2016. I call the meeting to order of the Wenatchee City Council. We are out of executive session. First item tonight would be the pledge to our flag. I guess we'll go to the right. Councilmember Mark Hart, would you lead us?
Okay. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Mark Hart. And roll card this evening. All seven councilmembers are present. First item on tonight's agenda would be the consent items, which includes this evening's agenda vouchers and the minutes from the previous meeting. Would entertain a motion if we had one.
I make a motion to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings as listed.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Bailey, to approve the CD's consent agenda as shown in the council packet. Any questions or comments? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item tonight would be citizen comment. This would be a time when any member of the audience that wished to address the council on any particular item could come up. And we give you three minutes and ask for your name and address for the record. You've got two folks. Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and fellow citizens of Wenatchee.
Name for the record?
I'm Scott Parsons. I live at 540 Crescent Lane, which is in south Wenatchee. Okay, in the past, for public safety and in liability issues, we've made people trim hedges and take down tree houses. Now, we have other safety issues, so we have spent a lot of money on traffic circles, enhancements at Plybiss Market and the Sore Plant, enhanced in the downtown area, and Fifth Street, we've been, went up that street and we've put little islands in out in the middle of the street, planted trees in them, which of course will have to be removed when they start to grow. And we now have been in the busy process of putting fancy corners on the streets. Now, my main concern is safety of the children. That can only speak for south Wenatchee, which is Okanagan Streets, south of Crawford and Okanagan Streets. Down there, people have sidewalk, I mean have curbs, no curbs, we have fences and hedges right up to the edge of the pavement. Now, that sounds like it must be on the city right away. Okay, so then, in the wintertime, the snowplow, Dillsy comes by and plows a big Burma snow into the little bit of space out there. That means the children have to walk in the dark, on slippery pavement, in all that traffic to get to the bus stop, to catch their bus to go to school. Now, if there's never been a safety hazard, that would certainly be it. So, how do you expect to address this? I see money seems to be no object now. You have plenty of money to spend on these other enhancements, but why don't you have sidewalks put in down there? That's a question to you. It seems like your priorities are different than the priorities of safety of the children in this town. You need to address that issue.
Thank you. I do know, I don't know how many, how much sidewalk have we added to south Wenatchee in the last four and a half years?
Not one inch down on those two streets.
I'm just thinking of in front of the schools and...
Six, eight blocks?
Yeah. And we're still working on it, so we're not, we're not done, but we're continuing to try to work on it.
Okay, because when that, because you know, the traffic down there has increased a whole lot with all those developments, putting in all those houses.
Yeah.
We now have a tremendous number of cars driving down that street, those two streets in the morning, of people going to work when the kids are trying to get to the school bus stop. And I just don't want to see a little child, children get hurt when someone loses control their car and plows into them.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir. We have another person I'd like to address the council this evening?
My name is Mike Hughes. Mark, Mark and I know each other. I don't know if I know any of the other few folks, but I live at 1321 Red Apple Road, which would be the top of Red Apple along by the high school track, straight up the hill. And I think that, well, I worked for the city fire department, I was a fire officer there for 30 years, retired, and I think that my address, the top Red Apple Road, and my mom who lives on the corner of South Hills Drive, would constitute the wildland urban fire interface. And I have a concern with, you know, the way our fire protection outlook is, considering what happened last year, is not being as good as it could be. And I talked to a lady on Skyline Drive the other day, and she, if you drive over Skyline, you'll see a great big patch of really tall, flammable grass, and she has a bunch of junipers there, and she has a house that would be considered a, very prone to burning really fast, it's, if a fire blew in along the hillside. I knew that will happen, but I stopped and talked to her for a little bit, and she had never been given any advice with respect to fire safety, to protect her house, or any of the considerations. I know the firewise program has been introduced, and it's a good start, and, but there's a lot more to the story. It's not the bottom line for fire safety. So I discussed with her a little while, things that identified myself and things that she could do to keep her house from burning down. And if a fire blows in, and that, that area will burn, her house is gonna go up in smoke. So the idea was, you know, to give her a little bit of information, but it's really not my job, although I would like it to be, on a volunteer basis, to be able to give information out, and I know Bill Larson's helping out in that regard now, but I talked to him months ago, and, and my, you know, idea with respect to helping Schlan County, one, if they wanted the help, was to designate on a priority basis some target hazard areas, not including Broadview at this time, because I don't anticipate a problem there for a long time, but other four or five target areas, priority wise, and a bunch of individual small groupings, and this lady's on Skyline Drive, you know, next time you go over Skyline, you can't miss it.
I know, I know which house you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, so anyhow, I live down the street, and I hate, you know, I'm gonna run up the street, you know, even if I have my shorts on and a tank top, and find a garden hose if a fire shows up. But I'm, you know, Brian Campbell has a program called One Wenatchee, and we're volunteers, and we're interested in helping in the arena of public safety on a volunteer basis. It's free, absolutely free. In my experience in the fire service, I would love, absolutely love, to get a list of houses that I could identify, he could, you know, Burnett could, anybody could, that would need to have someone go on a one-on-one basis and talk to them, and get them lined up as far as giving their, their houses a chance when a fire shows up. And so, you know, I encourage the council, the city, to, you know, you know, do whatever you want, or nothing or something, but I mean, there are volunteers like myself that are well-trained, and, is that my three-minute buzzer?
[laughing]
That are well, that are well-trained and raring to go, and want an opportunity to help out, and, you know, and I think that is a good thing. Like I said, the key, the operative word here is free. Okay, I have lots of time.
[laughing]
I know, and I have 30 years' worth, I know, I've seen it all. I shouldn't say that, I'm probably lying, but, you know, I think I've seen it all, I know what to do, I, you know, I can, I know what to do to save neighborhoods, I know what to do to save houses. And, and, you know, with Brian, who's well-trained in the area too, I mean, we have a big desire to help out in that regard, and it would be coordinated with Schlan County, what it have to be. And I don't know whether they have the time or desire, firewise, all they have doing, if they've even dealt with it, but talking to Bill Larson, he was only my suggestion what, what I and we could do.
Well, I'll follow up with Chief Burnett and talk to him about...
I'm in the phone book.
...roles that we could do, so.
Yeah. So I've got nothing else to do except mow the lawn.
[laughing]
Part of it is neighborhood communication, I thought it was great.
Can't mow it every day, can you?
No, well, not with this heat, not with all the rope this long, well, not as tall as it would be a fire hazard. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Mike, appreciate it. Anybody else wish to address the council this time? See, no undertakers. We've got two sets of presentation tonight. The first is Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. Do we know who's got that in front of them?
I have that.
Well, Councilmember Asparza, if you'd read that into the record, please.
The proclamation, whereas parks and recreation's activities and experiences provide opportunities for people to live, grow, and develop into contributing members of the community, and whereas parks and recreation enriches life experiences for members of our community, and whereas the parks and recreation agencies in the community provide outlets for physical activities, socialization, and stress-reducing experiences, and whereas parks, playgrounds, trails, open spaces, and recreation and aquatic centers make our city an attractive and desirable place to live, work, play, and visit, which contributes to our economic vitality, and whereas parks, greenways, and open spaces provide a welcome respite from our face-paced, high-tech lifestyles while protecting and preserving our natural environment, and whereas parks and recreation agencies touch the lives of individuals, families, groups, the entire community, which positively impacts the social, economic, health, and environment quality of our city. And now therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim July 2016 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Wenatchee, and encourage all citizens to join me in participating in and supporting the many recreational programs and facilities provided by public and private agencies. In witness whereof, I have under, hereunto, set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on the 14th day of July 2016. Mayor Frank J. Coontz.
Thank you, Councilmember Asparza. Is there Sean here? There he is, come on up. David Erickson gonna come up?
He's a long one.
You want to address for you? Say a couple of...
Sure, sure. So I'm the chair of the city's Arts Recreation Parks Commission, we're a group of citizens that recognize the vast importance that parks and recreation are to this community and the things they do, and all those things, Commissioner or councilmember, Asparza just said, are exactly true. I think everybody here can think of a specific example of how parks and recreation have helped communities and communities.
Oh, great.
Thanks for recognizing it.
Yes. All right, and the next on our agenda tonight is to do our service awards. So Maria Holman?
Good evening, councilmembers. The City of Wenatchee wishes to acknowledge the following employees for their years of service. I'm gonna go through the list, and we have two present today. Nicole Carter, who is in accounting, she's been with us 10 years. Dale Cantrell, our information systems director, he's been with us 10 years. David Gerlach with code enforcement, he has been with us 10 years. Brian Bowles, police corporal, he has been with us 10 years. Myself, I have been here 15 years. And Tim Liken, Licken, police sergeant, 15 years. Teresa Goodman, utility building specialist, 20 years, 20 years. And Ramiro Lopez, our HVAC facility maintenance, has been with us 20 years. So the aforementioned employees exemplify the exceptional work ethic and high degree of integrity that the City of Wenatchee employees display every day on the job. They are dedicated to serving the citizens of Wenatchee in a cost-effective, efficient manner. In recognition of their commitment, they are presented with a 2016 City of Wenatchee Service Award and PIN.
Excellent.
Yes.
Well, there's actually three of you here, if you count yourself.
Yes.
Are you counting yourself?
No. [laughing] So we have Dale Cantrell.
Pretty bad, you gotta read your own service award.
[laughing] And we have Dave Gerlach and his family here. Come on, Dave.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Come on up, Dave.
All right, sir. Good to see you.
And they get their pins?
Yes. Dale wanted his PIN.
So if we're taking a picture, Maria has to be the picture.
15, 15.
15 for you.
Ready? One, two, three. Everybody, don't get so close now.
I'm scoring. 15 years? I know. Good job. Gosh.
She looks to starting her career still again.
All right. Action items tonight, we have a few. The first item is the Lincoln Park Use Agreement. David Erickson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. David Erickson, Parks Recreation Cultural Services Director. I'm here tonight, I have two items. First one, we're requesting approval of Resolution 2016-33, which would authorize the mayor to sign a facility use agreement with Wenatchee Fall Ball. Now, this is kind of a, almost a housekeeping issue, where we have a long-term facility use agreement with Wenatchee Youth Baseball, to use the baseball fields down at the park, as well as the concession building. They purchased the concession building, built it, brought it into the park. The change, the housekeeping item comes, the concession building ownership is moving from Wenatchee Youth Baseball to Fall Ball. So to facilitate that, we thought, well, we need to have an agreement with Fall Ball then, so that way, when the building is done, they are responsible for removing it from the park, restoring the park, and also a couple other minor scheduling items and things like that, that we just wanted in, in an agreement, practices that we're currently doing. So with that, we have the agreement in front of you. This was recommended for approval by the Arts Recreation Park Commission at their June meeting, and also Wenatchee Fall Ball. I'm trying to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, David. Any questions for Mr. Erickson? Pretty straightforward. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2016-33, authorizing the mayor to sign a facility use agreement with Wenatchee Fall Ball Association for the use of Lincoln Park.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Harold, and a second by Councilmember Asparza, to adopt Resolution 2016-33 regarding the facility use agreement with Fall Ball Association. Questions or comments? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And David, you got the next one regarding the community center?
Yes, so on the next one, this is Resolution 2016-34. Again, this is a license agreement, similar to what we used to have when we operated the community center. And this is an agreement with Catholic Family and Child Services for use of a portion of the parking lot, basically, so they can park a vehicle down there. And this, a project actually began over a year ago by the police department, and if you want, I can go through kind of the background of it. I did put some of it in your agenda bill there. Basically, they're looking for a home for a mobile response unit for, for, let's see, Wenatchee, okay, well, let me just read it, because it's easier. This, this came from, from Catholic Family and Child Services. So they piloted a pre-booking diversion and community mental health policing initiative, is what it's called. And as, the program was modeled off of Seattle's Crisis Intervention Response Team and Reno's Mobile Outreach Safety Program. And there's two different types of services that they provide with this mobile service. The first one is crisis response, and this is where Wenatchee Police Department officers contact the on-call Catholic Family Service diversion workers when engaged with an individual in crisis in the street. The mobile unit then responds immediately to the law enforcement location with the goal of assuming care and treatment of the individual when it is safe and clinically appropriate to do so. Some, some of the benefits of this include the decreased use of the emergency department, decreased jail bookings, decreased time officers are spent involved in mental health casework. There's also some additional small evaluation units that they're able to, to do. Second part is crisis follow-up. So several times a week, the Catholic Family Services folks coordinate with the police department officers to report on the individuals with known or suspected mental illnesses who are having frequent contact with law enforcement. And they determine whether or not the individuals have recorded mental illness, and if so, they attempt to engage the individuals with non-serious crimes or nuisance behavior. The outreach model is integrated in the community mental health community. It's more proactive rather than reactive. Let's see, an average week sees more than 55 contacts, totaling approximately 40 hours of direct service on behalf of citizens of Wenatchee struggling with mental illness and homelessness and related substance abuse challenges. So I got involved with this. The mobile outreach was initially planned to go up at the, at the hospital, but for some reason, the parking agreement fell through. Police department was looking for an alternate location, so we kind of brainstormed with Public Works, came up with the community center, we approached Land Douglas Community Action, they were cool with putting it in their lot. So then, to facilitate that, we came up with a, a use agreement. Steve Smith's office put together the final license agreement. Some of the highlights are, we want to make sure that they work with the community center to avoid events in case they need it for parking or, or other activities that are happening down there. We made sure that they're aware of snow plowing activities that happen in the parking lot, so they would have to move it out for those events. And it also talks about insurance and liability provisions. So, put together that agreement, and we're recommending approval.
So clarify for me, is this just a parking space to keep this, or will it be connected, hooked up for daily use?
Yeah, it's essentially a parking spot. They will plug it in, they, they lease others, Catholic Family Child Services leases other space at the community center, so, on the old Head Start Building. So they'll be parked over in front of that, and then would plug it in to keep everything charged.
The water and sewer and that kind of stuff would not be hooked up?
Right.
Thank you.
Right.
And does that car then stay there more permanently, or does it go to locations and do stuff and then come back, or is it kind of a, more of a, it's gonna be there most days?
Yeah, it's gonna be there most days unless there's an incident, and then it drives away off to that incident. I know they are looking for a more permanent home, they're looking at an old station, so they're really hoping that this is a temporary home for them.
How big is the vehicle?
You know, I don't have the specifics on the vehicle. I think it's just a standard RV.
All right, any other questions for David? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2016-34, authorizing the mayor to sign a license agreement with Catholic Charities of the Diocese of Yakima, doing business as Catholic Family and Child Services for the use of a portion of the Wenatchee Community Center parking lot.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Kulas, to adopt Resolution 2016-34, authorizing the mayor's signature on a license agreement with Catholic Family and Child Services for use of a portion of the parking lot at the community center. Any questions or comments for David? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Housing study, Allison.
Good evening, Nelson Williams, Executive Services Director. You have before you the request for proposals that we did to do a housing market study, and this is a result of conversations that have been occurring on a regular basis. We, we have at least a dozen instances in the last couple of months where we've had different agencies and entities come to us and talk about their workforce, having jobs available, but not being able to find housing. We really feel like it's become a critical issue. The mayor organized the other mayors in the county and approached the Port of Schlan County to have the discussion about the critical nature of this issue. And together with Steve, Steve's staff, we've had discussions with the Housing Authority and the Women's Resource Center. And if you really look at the full spectrum of this issue, from our permanent, permanent supportive housing, the units that are aging out of their HUD subsidies, the changing in our, our farmworker workforce, all the way up to our workforce housing and needs to accommodate teachers, nurses. It's become a critical issue. So we very quickly turned around requests for proposals. We received back four proposals. Our committee, a smaller committee, got together Monday and reviewed those, and have recommended Burke Consulting to do this study for us. They would take all of our data and do their work quickly. We also would broaden the steering committee to include other representatives, Kathy Mohaw from Schlan County, Lori Barnett from East Wenatchee, because we'd be looking at the federally designated area, which is the larger map that was in the request for proposals. And the intent is to have preliminary results back in mid-August, and have asked for this topic to be on the tri-commission agenda. So that is the meeting of the, the Port Commission, the Public Utility District, and Schlan County Commissioners. And, and then to our end, on the, the market end of it, we also are continuing to, Steve has been diligent about working on the tax increment financing bill that we tried to get through last session for the designated disaster area. And is, the conversation has now come up to look at that as a one-time opportunity, using the cost from new housing development, and using that as the increment. So in this proposal, we are also asking for an assessment of what a project like that would create an impact in terms of one-time benefit, so that we can use that to continue the conversation about that legislation. So we're pretty excited about this, and the, the work, and the quick ability to turn this around. And we did talk about this at the June 9 Finance Committee, and got authorization for one-time funding of $15,000. But we did also apply to our homeless grant, the additional funds that have come available, and we'll have that conversation on July 27. And so we would ask for your authorization to have the mayor negotiate a contract with Burke Consulting to carry out this work.
Allison, how, how big is the, the area, the scope, is it not just the city limits, it goes beyond that? What, how, how big of a...
So in the request for proposals, there was the federally designated area includes Rock Island, Malaga, East Wenatchee, Sunny Slope, and Monitor in Wenatchee.
So that $15,000 spread out, I mean, or is the city of Wenatchee paying the whole?
The $15,000 would, and, and frankly, when you're looking at data for our area, you really are looking at that statistical area, so it makes sense. And so the $15,000 is just the cost for them to do the work for the study.
Are we not sharing that cost with others in the area?
Well, the housing, obviously, the application to the homeless funds are the two-county funds that are gathered, so.
So if, if, if the homeless dollars are used, then essentially the region's paying for it through federal dollars. If for some reason it doesn't get done, then the city's just gonna do it, because that's what the city of Wenatchee does, we just take the lead and go figure it out.
But we also have some specific interest, particularly with the, the one-time benefit of housing, so we can use that in the legislative process as well.
So you're gonna get the number of housing units, available units, I mean, what kind of information are we expecting?
So we, the request for proposal looks at an overview of the market, a needs assessment that would give an understanding of our, our market and, and demographic changes, the potential of our market, so buildable lands, what, what could be developed, and potential development incentives, and then trends in the market, and then the additional work to look at what a project would produce for tax increment.
Great. All right, any other questions for Allison?
I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to negotiate a contract with Burke Consulting Incorporated to carry out the housing needs assessments and market demand study.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Harold, to authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign a contract with Burke Consulting to carry out the housing needs assessment study. Questions or comments? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Allison. Jen? First Street Bike Study and SR 285 pedestrian crossing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jennifer Sagan, Assistant City Engineer. I have a couple of projects that we're ready to get into design on, and wanted to explain a bit to you guys, and then hopefully authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the consultant to do the design work. So there's two separate grant-funded projects. We decided to put them together into one consultant contract, because they're both similar in nature, they're both non-motorized improvements for bike and PED, and just for efficiency of project management, we decided to put them together into one. The first project is the First Street Bike Steady. First Street is designated in our region-wide bike plan as a type-one bikeway, which is intended for not just the serious riders, but a wide range of riders. So we had originally thought we might just apply for a project to go ahead and turn it into a bikeway. We, we backed off of that after talking to the pedestrian and bike grant folks, they said, hey, why don't we just give you some money to do a really detailed study on what that would look like? So that's what we decided to submit for, and we got the funding to do that. So as part of that, it's basically just going to be a very large public involvement portion, find out what folks want to see, what you guys want to see. The businesses downtown, because we're looking at, there's a map in your packet. We're looking at all the way from Miller Street down to the pedestrian bridge and access to the Loop Trail. So a pretty long section of the roadway that we just want to find out what is the best way to get bikers downtown because there's, and I guess it's not just bikers downtown, but it's, you know, from the Loop Trail back up to the businesses and the homes. So that's kind of the intent of that project. We'll probably be coming back at you in a couple of months, maybe at a work session to go a little more in-depth on what the, our consultant has put together a couple of options to look at before we start sending them out to the public. We know that they don't necessarily love change, especially when it comes to bike lanes, so we want to make sure that we've got something good and strong that is actually good for the city. The second project is another grant-funded project in the South Wenatchee area, SR 285 pedestrian crossing improvements. And it's a study to look at the areas between Kitata Street and Peachy and crossing of SR 285 Mission in Shalane. You know, it's about 30,000 vehicles a day on those two roadways, and it's hard to connect the residential areas to the commercial areas and stores and whatnot downtown. So the intent of this project is to get them safely across. We've already identified through some pre-scoping areas that we think we'd like to do the improvements at Spokane Street and then down where the couple that comes together there near Chahala Street. But part of this, we actually put extra money in the grant to go out and make sure, get the pedestrian counts, talk to folks that walk that way, find out exactly where they would like to have the crossing, and then evaluate whether or not curb bulbouts and rectangular flashing beacons are actually the best system to put in there. We're also possibly see how the new Hawk Signal works farther down in South Wenatchee, and that might be something that we'd look at here. So happy to entertain any questions that you have about either project. We went through a process with the RFPs. We got proposals back from three consultants, and we actually had held interviews with them. And through that process, we determined Pertite out of Seattle as the most qualified for this work. So that's who we'd like to sign the contract with. They did the design for us on the pedestrian project that's happening right now on SR 285 and with the Hawk Signal.
So the First Street is just a study? We don't have any money set aside for construction?
Correct.
But this SR 285 stuff, we actually have money?
For construction. So that would actually go, it would be designed this fall and winter and then out to add in the spring for a summer, late spring or summer construction time, working around Apple Blossom is usually what we either shoot for way before that or not start till afterwards. And then yet the bike study, the deliverable will be a conceptual plan and good cost estimate so that if and when we're ready to implement it, we can take that to go get funds from somewhere to implement it.
All right. Any questions from the council of Jen? If not, I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your honor, I move for the city council to authorize the mayor to negotiate with Pertite Incorporated for design services for the First Street Bike Study, project number 1522 on SR 285 pedestrian crossing, project number 1601, and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Bailey, second by councilmember Markart to authorize the mayor's signature with Pertite Inc. for design services regarding First Street and then our pedestrian crossing SR 285 project. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Jen, thank you for being here. Well, next is a public hearing item regarding the condemnation of property on Western Avenue. So process for public hearings is we'll hear from our city staff. The council will be able to ask any questions of staff. We'll then turn it over to the public for any comment.
Number 2 Canyon Road.
Excuse me, what I say.
Western.
Western. Okay, yeah, number 2 Canyon Road. And then after that, we'll turn it over to the council for their actions. So first up will be Gary Owen, City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Gary Owen, your City Engineer. Yeah, well, we actually hope this doesn't wind up a condemnation, but this ordinance is basically, we need to do this in case we do get to the point of a condemnation of this property for the Western Avenue project. What we're doing tonight, what you're doing with this ordinance tonight allows you to go forward. We get possession and use of the property with the agreement of the property owner, and then we are able to continue to negotiate for, oh, I forget the, the ordinance has the proper legal terminology for the value, just compensation, I think, is what it's called. So that's the only thing that we don't agree to with the rack property. So this, this project of ours is a safety project. It's a part of the, part of the reason of this end of the project. It's similar to what the gentleman behind me, Mr. Parsons, is asking about on Okanagan Street. We're installing sidewalks, in this case, to connect the rack, a kind of a non-motorized facility that we have up at the intersection of Number 2 Canyon Road and Skyline with the sidewalk system that we've already got in a large part of the city that kind of ends right down there at Western and Cherry Street right now. So, and unfortunately, well, fortunately, we have right-of-way to be able to build that on one side of the road, all the way from Cherry all the way up to the rack. It's just that at the rack, very similar to a lot of the properties that we have for many, many properties, I'll explain here, on Okanagan Street, the right-of-way was never dedicated or planted beyond basically the pavement that's out on the road now. And this is what happens when we have to buy right-of-way. It can be very difficult. It's hard to agree on people's value. I wouldn't want to sell my property, I don't think, to the city to widen a road, but fortunately, I don't think I'm in that position. So what this ordinance does tonight is declare the project a public necessity and allows us to go forward with the project and establish just compensation and hopefully agree to a deal and not have to go through condemnation after our project.
So we've got a possession and use agreement signed. We've agreed on preliminary monetary of 30,000, but that could get changed based on whatever the new appraisals come in at and the federal process.
Yes, that's in a bank account.
Yeah.
That's controlled not by us and not by the property owner, but by the court.
It's nice to hear that the property owner is agreeing to go further. So obviously, it's gone, it's done well so far.
Yeah, so far so good.
We're just disagreeing about the money.
Yes.
So that's good. They want it done then, too.
Yeah, they don't want to, they don't want to stand in the way of the project, and we're kind of got our backs against the wall, timeline, the time of year. We're also trying to get this construction money obligated as part of one of the, we're one of several agencies partners in the Regional Transportation Group. And as a group, we need to obligate, you know, spend so much construction money every year. We have a target, and if we don't make it, we stand to lose a little bit of money that's doled out to all the cities and the two-county region. So we'd really like to get this project going.
Is there still a chance it gets built this year?
Yes. At least it gets started this year, maybe gets the signal in. This project also includes the signal down at Western and Maple Street where we've been having some collision trouble.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Owen? All right, I'll then turn it over to any members of the public that wish to address the council on the condemnation of property on Number 2 Canyon Road. See no members of the audience wishing to have a public speaking? Then I'll turn it over to the council for their action.
Your honor, for discussion purposes, I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance 2016-19 authorizing condemnation of property for the Number 2 Canyon Road and Skyline Drive Improvement Project.
Second.
A public project.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Kulaas, second by councilmember Harold to adopt ordinance 2016-19 authorizing condemnation of property on Number 2 Canyon Road and Skyline Drive. Any questions or comments or any discussion points? Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next up, reports, mayor's report. Every time we get to this, I don't ever remember. Our value what's next, Think Take, is continuing to meet every couple of weeks. So there's a group of 20 or 21 of us, not many government folks, me and Mayor Lacy and I think Steve Wright might be the only three, are continuing to kind of noodle our way through a number of what they call game changers. So we're continuing to work on that. We're going to get some more information. Three or four or five have kind of risen to the top, but we're still working on, kind of working our way through those. So I know that just kind of regional cooperation in one form or another is near the top of almost everyone's list. How you define that might be different, but having the governmental entities cooperate more, housing has risen to the top as one of the discussion items as well. So we're still working our way through that. Transportation council meeting today, not much came out of that, I don't think. Allison, what else do we got going that's?
So I just wanted to, in light of the earlier comments, let everybody know that we had a meeting with our consultants who are working on the community planning assistance for wildfire process. They, we had a meeting out at Fire Station 1 where they're looking at the preliminary risk maps and looking at our WUI interface area, the Wildland Urban Interface. And they have researched all of our codes, and they're now working on recommendations. And so we'll be looking at that information coming back to us later this fall. They're just fine-tuning it. But we're really excited about the work that is taking place there on that. And we probably need to do some more updates on that because we are, we are in that period of time where people are thinking about that, and there's some good changes. Also had the preliminary look at the era of mega fires, work that is being put together by North 40 and circulated. It is an excellent educational piece, and there will be other presentations of that coming forward. And so I would stay tuned for that. But really, coming out of our experience last fall and really trying to help put a good face on this moving forward in terms of this is what happens, here's the educational piece, and here's what communities can do moving forward and making it into one of North 40's great productions, so. And then all of our regular work continues. So we have a busy work session. Do we have a quorum next week for our work session?
Linda, you're running the work session next week, so I'll be gone, so.
I'll be calling in.
And I will be gone, actually, the next two weeks, the 20, meeting, 21st and the 28th. Be on vacation with the family.
I'll be calling in both weeks, actually.
Okay. Great.
We've got a number of items for next week's work session.
Yes.
Including a report to the museum and some other.
The museum, I postponed their report. So Dave, we'll be here with an update on the Met Hall Park project, possibly the art appraisal. The major focus next week is the complete streets policy. And that will, TIB has a new complete streets grant program. So very important piece of work that we'll go over next week at the work session.
Councilmembers, anything going on in your various committee work and stuff to keep the, keep us up to rest on? I know we've had some vacations around here, so we've had some.
Oh, councilmember, as far as I attended the Wenatchee Downtown Association Board meeting yesterday, I guess recurring themes, street trees and the replacement thereof.
Yep. And I know Matt's gone, but he's made it clear that he's going to do some of that work, I know, this fall.
Right.
Tour de bloom?
The tour de bloom, which we might want to speak with you about.
Yeah, and I've had a couple of conversations with some other folks. We should sit down and chat.
We should.
Yeah.
And Taste of the Harvest is Saturday, September 17. They're changing the character of it, Ruth. Would that be a good way to describe it? To more harvesty and less?
Vendors?
Retail vendors.
Oh, good, okay.
Not, not, not retail, like, non-harvest-related retail vendors and that.
Changing the name, the name of it, too, aren't they?
Yeah, and I'll probably never catch on to that, given my age, so used to that. And then the, some of the Main Street issues and the BNO tax rebate and potential discussions with their larger group with the legislature on fixing some of those problems associated with them.
It's tough for Dan to have to come in on January 1st to make sure they got their BNO tax credit.
And they sure appreciate the city's contribution to that.
That's been, that's been a good, that's been a win-win.
Yeah.
That's been a good deal. All right, anything else for the good of the order?
Koho in the morning, do you want to?
What's that?
Koho in the morning.
Yeah, I'm not going to be available to Koho in the morning. Anybody want to spend 10 minutes with Clint Strand at 7:35?
Will not be able to.
It's going to be in my garden.
We can do it.
7:35?
Since you're going to be absent next week, do you and I need to get together for anything?
Yeah, I'll call you and just, yeah. There's a couple of things that might happen while I'm gone. We're acquiring some right-of-way in different locations for the Western Avenue project. You may have to sign some purchase agreements, but. All right.
Some actual authority, cool.
Yeah.
I do have a little, a little good news from Shalane Douglas Health. Barry Kling has been kind of involved in the transition from RSN to ACH and things like that. And they're happy to announce that Linda Evans Parlet has accepted the position of executive director.
Oh, good. That's very good news.
That's outstanding.
Yeah, she's going to be a great fit for that.
Yes, that's, good for her for taking that on.
Yeah.
Okay, if nothing else, we are adjourned.